At this time, we'll have a moment of silent meditation and a pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I call this meeting to order. All three county commissioners are here, and this is a great, exciting day for the three of us, because this is really how we like to share how democracy works. And not only do we have the students, we have their parents, we have the teachers and the community. So, we really want to thank you all for being here, and it's being taped. So, I just wanted to warn you of what you say, because it will always be there. So, at this time, we have the winners of the 2019 County Government Month Essay Winners, and what we're going to do is ask each person to come up, and in case you don't have your essay, we're going to make you read it. We have copies for you. And then, when you're done, we're going to have you introduce who you are with, and your parents, and any teachers, and they'd be more than welcome to say something. And then, we're going to sit you up here in the real seats, and we'll move to the other seats. And then, you're all going to run the meeting. So, with that, I'm proud to say that the third-place essay winner is Adeline Daring. All right? If you would come up right to the podium, just to the podium, and if you could read your essay, and then, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
I am still very much a West Virginia boy. I haven't forgotten my roots, because that's really who I am. A quote by Jerry West. This quote, I feel, is one of my favorites, and it's a quote that relates to almost anyone who has lived here. To most Americans, West Virginia is a coal-mining state, and to others, it's still Western Virginia. To anyone who has lived here, it's home. But why is that? There are millions of reasons why people like this mountain state, but one of those reasons for me is the Montagnalia County Commission. A county commission is defined as a group of elected officials charged with administering the county government. In some states, there isn't a county commission. In other states, like Georgia, there is one commissioner in charge of overlooking the entire county. West Virginia is a state that believes to have a successful government, you must have more than one individual in charge. This is why we have a bicameral government, to ensure that bills are fair and overlooked by multiple groups. In local government, we have three county commissioners, each elected for six-year terms, but set up so that there is a new commissioner elected every two years. The county commission is in charge of the supervision and maintenance of public buildings, managing air and water pollution, supervising the sewage system, traffic laws, and maintenance of first-aid facilities, just to name a few duties. This ensures that West Virginia is a mostly safe and healthy place that we all know and love. What makes West Virginia so unforgettable? Maybe it's the scenery, or the always-there-to-help attitude found within the people who inhabit it. As JFK once famously said, "The sun doesn't always shine in West Virginia, but the people always do." The people here shine because the people help everyone. It's thanks to the numerous charities funded by the commission that people even live here. Everyone here is either helping or being helped. The county commission donates a total of $1.1 million to nonprofit organizations, including the Child Advocacy Center, the Boys and Girls Club, Health Right, and the Your Community Foundation. They also fund the Mon Rivers Trail Conservancy, which directly impacts me, because I participate in bike club and cross-country. Overall, the donations from the commission make the lives of many easier. When you take what a commission is and what ours does into consideration, you begin to realize how much of an effect it has. The commission in West Virginia participates in all branches of the government. Because of this, they help make West Virginia that much better, and they do this by donating to charities. The commission oversees the safety and preservation of Montagnalia by donating the money to these charities and to the pollution, to the prevention of pollution and damage to the environment. These reasons help West Virginia stay as West Virginia, and make me proud of my home among the hills. And for that, I thank the commission.
And before you come, oh, no, we're not going to let you sit down. Oh, no. Oh, no, this is big time. Would you like to introduce who you brought in, also your teacher?
Well, Samantha Carver is here. She's also from South Middle School.
Good.
She got honorable mentions in states. Ms. Conley is here. She's my history teacher at South Middle School. I'm from South Middle School. My name is Adeline Daring. I also have my lovely parents.
Remember that when they said that.
Yeah. And that's it.
Great. Ms. Conley, did you want to come up and say anything? Because you've been, we really appreciate you being a part of this.
Well, we really enjoy that you come out and visit us, and that the kids get to hear more about county commission firsthand. I like them to see and experience, so this is a really great opportunity for them to get to come here and see that. And both these girls are fantastic writers, so I'm really, really proud of the fact that they earned the spot to be able to come here and see you all, and see how this actually works, and get to share their knowledge of the county commission with you all, because they worked very, very hard on their writing. So, thank you.
Can I ask a question? So, you're the history teacher?
Yeah, I teach West Virginia Studies.
So, you're responsible for the History Bowl?
Yes.
And you guys just won another state championship?
Yeah, we just, yes, yes, we won a state championship. We took first and fifth at the states, and yeah, we're getting ready for our trophy presentation next week, so we're really excited about that.
I have that on my calendar, by the way.
Good, I hope you all can attend.
I received the invitation today, so I will be there.
Oh, fantastic. We hope you will be there. It's really, we're really proud at South of this, and like, and both of these girls will be there, and part of that, they've worked really hard to do what they did, so we appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Adeline, if you want to come up here, you're going to sit next to Commissioner Hawkins. I will give you these. And what we didn't tell you also is you also get money. And so, that will be coming, and also, the teacher gets the money by the, here's the, okay? So, you're going to sit here. You're going to be...
And I'm going to disappear out of sight. If anybody's looking for me after this, it'll be the little squeaky voice down there.
Okay, great. The second-place winner is from, ooh.
Not you.
Oh, shoot, there's a check. You get to cash it. You get to keep it yourself. Okay, the second-place winner, I hope I say this right, is Marissa Fajewski?
Fieski.
Fieski. Been working on that, from St. Francis. Marissa, come on down.
Without county commission, my life would be a lot harder. County commission does so much work behind the scenes that makes my life in West Virginia much more easygoing and enjoyable. Whether it's approving budgets or hiring county employees, commissioners always seem to be working hard to make our state the best it could be. From what I've learned, county commission's work seems to revolve around the safety and lifestyle of the citizens. They have many interesting authorities. For example, two things they have power over are the authority to hire litter control officers and the authority of agriculture extension. To some, these duties might not seem like much, but in reality, they impact West Virginia as a state. Personally, I think the litter control officers are a great idea, because they help keep our state clean and safe. Agricultural extension also seems to be something extremely important to the environment of West Virginia. Ensures that our state is constantly expanding productively, agriculturally, and economically. County commission is special to me, because they work hard to make sure that West Virginia is accompanied with the qualities it needs to grow. I never really realized until now that the places I drive by every day, such as a park or a hospital, were placed there for a reason. County commission makes sure those functions and services will be helpful to citizens. One thing I learned county commission has authority over was air pollution control. That is one thing that is super-important to me, and most likely, everyone else living around me. Not only does air pollution affect the citizens, but it also affects the animals in West Virginia. Recognizing that air pollution is a defective factor to the state is a very important thing, and I am extremely glad that county commission acknowledges that and tries to restrict it from getting out of hand. When I think of county commission, I automatically think of hard workers. The duties they control are important to our state as a whole, and certainly, impact how our state is portrayed. County commission helps West Virginia continue to grow, and makes sure everything is handled with care. Without their kind actions, West Virginia would not be the state it is today. I am grateful county commission is constantly trying to make West Virginia the best it could be.
Marissa, if you would like to say who you're with, and then, also introduce your teacher, and I'd like the teacher to come forward.
Okay. My teacher, Ms. Linda Brandmire, is here with me, and my mom, Kristen Fieski.
Okay, great. Want to come forward and just...
Thank you, commissioners, for all that you do for our students, and encouraging them to participate in not only understanding and learning about county government, but giving them an opportunity to use their talents of written expression in order to make the connection that will help them become engaged, effective citizens in a very few short years. Marissa is quite a talented student across the board. She is very diligent in all of her subjects, particularly in language arts with her reading and writing curriculum. Marissa has a very mature confidence about her. She is able to take any concept that we discuss in class and really run with it, and become very successful in any aspect of language arts. Obviously, she's a very good writer and a nice public speaker, so congratulations, Marissa.
Marissa, if you would come down and sit next to Sean Secora.
In addition to that, Marissa is also a very accomplished athlete.
Great. Before I say the winner, we're very fortunate, just came in from Charleston, Jennifer Piercy.
Thank you.
And she just drove all the way up from the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia, and I would like her to come up, and she will be the new executive director. If you want to come up and say who you are, and if you have any specific introductions, and then, announce why you're here.
Sure. First of all, thank you very much for having me today. The County Commissioners Association, one of our focuses that we have every year is communication and education. We like for the public to understand what commissioners do, what counties are responsible for. And so, one way of doing this is, every April during County Government Month, we host a essay contest for eighth graders, just like there's one here in Mon County. And this year, we had about over 200 entries. We had three winners, and then, we also had five honorable mentions. One of the honorable mentions came from Montagnalia County, from South Middle School, and that student's name is Samantha Carver.
Yes. If you would like to read, good. You're way ahead of me. That's why you're the state honorable mention. Good. Go ahead.
Have you ever wondered how the Montagnalia County Commission influences your life? The Montagnalia County Commission has a large role in my community. They disburse the levies that provide additional funding for education. They fund the county parks, which are Chestnut Ridge, Mason-Dixon, and Camp Muffley. They provide money for 4-H camps, and these are only some of the categories they help with. Ambulances, they deliver, they pick up injured people and deliver them to the hospital. They play a huge role in our community. I was in an ambulance a few times because of injuries. One time, I was biking in my neighborhood, and I was watching out for my younger sister. My bike ran off the road. It was a gradual slope, but I couldn't stop. I ended up going off a six-foot retaining wall, and hit my chin on a metal fire pit and had to go to the hospital. The county commission funds emergency services, including EMTs. I am thankful, because without them, I would have a huge gash in my chin. And I was also at a mountain biking race, and they helped me there. On Saturdays at Walmart, there is recycling for those who don't live within the city limits. That includes me. Only those who live inside the city limits have recycling picked up, and I find this very beneficial for me and my family, because we have less trash to throw away, therefore, less trash is put into landfills. Camp Muffley, one of the county parks funded by the county commission, is a great place. I go there for my dad's work luncheon. The pool is well-kept and clean, even for its small size. The pavilions have space for large crowds, and all this is made possible through the budget of the county commission. It is funded as a 4-H camp. I personally have not been to a 4-H camp there, but many of my friends have, and they always talk about how great it is. The rail trail is partially funded by the county commission. I use the trail often. It's great for biking. It's actually where I learned to bike. The trail is a great way to get around Morgantown and across Montagnalia County. Lastly, education. Personally, I think it's one of the most important things. Our teachers have so much value in students' lives. They teach us what we need for later life. My middle school experience has been great, and it's only been magnified by great teachers. My sixth-grade social studies teacher, Ms. Peterson, taught me great note-taking. My math teacher in seventh grade, Ms. Phillips, was an excellent teacher, and the Montagnalia County Commission advocates and informs about the levy for education. My eighth-grade teachers are all amazing. Ms. Conley, my social studies teacher, stands out. The money that comes from the levy provides extra funds for teachers' classrooms. And what I'm trying to say is that the Montagnalia County Commission affects my life in many ways. Without it, life here would be so different.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say who you're with, and then, I'll have Mrs. Conley come up again?
With me today, I brought my mom, Angela Carver, and my dad, Jeffrey Carver, and I also brought my teacher, Ms. Conley.
Great. Ms. Conley, you want to just come up?
Like I said, with Addie, and both her and Samantha work really, really hard in the classroom. It's so nice when we get to, you know, allow them to shine and showcase, you know, the skills that they do have, and writing, they're definitely both gifted writers. So, it's very, very nice that they, that this got to be entered, both at the county level, and then, also, at the state level as well, so you guys got to read, you know, and hear what they've learned about the county commission. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get a picture of her?
Sure.
Okay.
Do you want, yeah, with us, do you want...
Yeah, I'm going to go grab my camera and have her come up.
Okay, that'd be great. I've never heard it this quiet in this room. This is a rarity. I've never heard that in a classroom either. We'll have an edit.
I want to stand on top of the clock.
Oh, yeah, you're going to jump over.
Jump? My jumping days are over.
Oh, okay.
Yes. No, wait.
Here we go.
Okay, ready? One, two, three.
Fantastic. Thank you. And I hope you'll stare around for a little bit to watch what's about to happen.
Hey, I drove through all that construction I'm staying.
Oh, good, good, good. Fantastic. And finally, all three of us are very excited, because everyone's a winner, no matter what, and everyone who applied, we really appreciate that, because I think that's the best way to learn. In fact, I sometimes, we've learned that the students know a little bit more than the parents of what the county commissioners actually do. And what I'd like now to do is invite up Gabriella Garrison, and have her read her essay for the first place. So, welcome. Hey, 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 just in case.
How about you're going to read it from memory?
Yeah, I thought you were going to do it. I was going to, wow. No problem.
The Montagnalia County Commission makes my life better every day. In all of the 55 counties of West Virginia, there is a county commission. Almost all of them are only made up of three commissioners, but two counties include five elected members. The Montagnalia County Commissioners support their residents and improve my life by using county tax revenue to serve the community's needs, using the authority to treat streams to prevent floods, and the ability to hire litter control officers, and using ordinance authority to provide for the elimination of hazards to the public health and safety. Most people in my community pay taxes to the county. These taxes are then used by the commission, so that they can carry out their duties and responsibilities to make Montagnalia County a better place. Certain services are under authority of the commission, such as ambulance services, airports, hospitals, jails, National Guard, et cetera. All of these services need funding in order to be correctly run by the commission, which is why they use the county taxes. The commissioners are also in charge of hiring people to do certain jobs. They hire litter control officers, who are authorized to enforce the laws related to litter, open dumps, and proof of proper, solid waste disposal. They hire these officers, so the county is able to stay clean and healthy. In addition to that, the county commission also has the authority to treat systems to prevent disasters like floods. They also manage floodplains and mudslide areas. These authorities reduce the amount of natural disasters that the county could face. The commission uses ordinance authority for the elimination of hazards to the public health and safety. The commission has the authority to get rid of anything that may be harmful to the health or hazardous to our county. They are authorized to take appropriate action if anything dangerous, and dismiss the issues that could be unsafe to the community. This commission protects everyone in Montagnalia County and makes my life safer and better. In conclusion, the county commission is doing as much as they can to improve Montagnalia County. They have many responsibilities that need to be taken care of every day, and are way more important than they may seem. The commission has done a great deal of work to make my county the way it is, and that is why they have made my life better in so many different ways. Thank you.
Who you're with, and then, also, your teacher.
Okay. My teacher is Mrs. Addie from Mount near Middle School. She's my HOTS teacher.
Okay.
And then, I brought my parents, Mike and Heather Garrison, with me today.
Okay. Ms. Addie, you want to come up and...
This is one you do forever.
I just want to say, congratulations to Gabby. She's such a joy, and has such a positive attitude, and comes in and is just a wonderful human being. And I'm so proud of her for winning this, so congratulations, Gabby. I love having her in my class, and I've enjoyed teaching her this year, and I'm going to miss her so much next year. Thank you. I'd also like to thank the commission. We have a pantry plus at our school, and you guys, you can't imagine how impactful that is for our students, and we just want to thank you guys for supporting that, too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Gabby, come on, can I call you Gabby or Gable? Which would you call? Gabby, come on up. Not only do you get a check for $150...
You get to sit by toll.
Yeah, that's a punishment, some people will tell you.
Another thing about Gabby, she's a very accomplished athlete. Her team just won the middle school championship, and Gabby's their pitcher, and never lost a game.
Whoa, congratulations.
I had the pleasure of coaching her for a year, about, was it six years? But she was always a pleasure. Congratulations, Gabby. I'm very proud of you.
If you give me 30 seconds, I'm going to explain to her how we're going to run the meeting. Okay? Then, generally, Sean generally will go ahead and then, the motion will accept. Okay? So, we're going to now move forward, and I'll be quiet. Yeah, so you just read consent and then, that's all we do.
Okay. Consent and approval, county administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
We have no exonerations. Vouchers for general county fund, $292,804.40, 911, $10,003.24. Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,086.11. Camp Muffley, $1,0998.50. Mason Dixon Park, $100. Recreation levy, $945.60. Star City Tiff, $140,0253.12. Mon General Tiff, $306,586.27. University Town Center, $794,042.30. Purchasing card vouchers, general county fund, $17,971.76. Cole Severance, $369.56. 911, $10,00546.94. Camp Muffley, $1,014.20. Mason Dixon Park, $168.10, for a voucher total of $1,578,210.59. We have budget revisions that require state approval for general fund, for law enforcement, dams and dredging, and we're moving money from contingencies to capital projects, other buildings, position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Western Board of Zoning Appeals, Mon County Planning Commission, Development Authority, Building Commission, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, and the Mon County Board of Health. Fiduciary orders for May 15, 2019.
Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Oh, no?
Yep.
Move for approval.
Second. Since it has been properly moved and second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make one point, just as for the commissioners. This batch of invoices includes the invoice for the payment of the Star City transponders, so that they'll be able to participate in the county zirker system when everything comes online, we hope, by the end of June. So, that's all I have.
We will now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes.
Good.
Introduction of new employees and personnel changes.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here today to introduce a new maintenance employee, Charles Namet. I don't know if he still wants a job by the time there's only three of you. So, but Charles is from the Dillon or PA area. He has many years as a carpenter, foreman. He will be full-time. Starting salary is $30,000 a year with full benefits, and his salary will be reviewed after his six-month probation period.
Move for approval. Second.
Since it has been properly moved and second, is there any discussion? We will now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against?
Welcome.
Welcome. Welcome to the county.
Is there anyone else?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Kat Hinkle with Chestnut Ridge Park. I am introducing Ms. Amanda Blaney, who will be our seasonal part-time cleaning and office staff to help until we get a more full seasonal part-time office and cleaning staff. So, she's filling in as necessary, and her pay rate will be $11 an hour. And I will have the paperwork to you when I have it formalized.
Okay, thank you.
I move forward?
For a second.
Second.
Since it has been properly moved and second, is there any discussion? We will now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against?
And I want you all three to know, when you wrote your essays, and you mentioned the park, she got very excited.
I did. So, they got her realizing.
It's good to know, I mean, so, you never understand how people really appreciate when you mention it. Everyone doesn't realize Chestnut Ridge Park is part of our county, and so, I saw you get real excited and shake your...
But congratulations to all of y'all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Tom, you might recognize a JR as in this one.
Where?
It's not...
No, okay.
Comments from the public, come to the podium, state your name and address.
Is there anyone? No one? Good, this is good. And we just move on to Colleen Coon Grants. So afraid of her.
Colleen Coon Grants.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have requests for reimbursements. They're all from the Governor's Highway Safety Program. The first one is distracted driving in the amount of $3,734.77. The next one is impaired driving in the amount of $4,244.97. And lastly, I have Safe Communities in the amount of $2,207.17.
Move for approval.
Second. Since it has been properly moved and second, is there any discussion? We will now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Okay, letter received from Lynn C. Crane to notify the commission of her resignation as fiduciary commissioner.
You want it read into the record?
Yes, please.
Okay. This letter will serve as my formal notice that I am resigning my position as fiduciary commissioner for Montagnalia County, effective May 31, 2019. My husband and I have decided that it's time to retire. We are closing out our local law practice and are moving to a more temperate climate. I appreciate the opportunity that I have had to serve the citizens of Montagnalia County as a fiduciary commissioner over the past 15-plus years. Yours, very truly yours, Lynn C. Crane.
Move to accept.
Move to accept.
Do I say second?
Yes.
Second. Since it has been properly moved and second, is there any discussion?
I appreciate the service that Ms. Crane has provided to the county, and we're going to miss her.[1749.66]
Yes, also the fact that now we unfortunately are down to only one fiduciary commissioner left in the county.
And we are exploring means to resolve that issue.
We will now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Letter received from Joseph M. Armstrong, administrative director of the WV Supreme Court of Appeals regarding the amount of rent paid for space at the Justice Center for Family Court.
Yes.
Please read the letter.
Dear President Bloom, while there continues to be some dispute about the amount of rent for the family court space since those offices moved on October first, two thousand fifteen, there is nonetheless the expectation that the court will pay rent. We have continued to receive invoices indicating a square foot rate of twenty-four fifty and we continue to mark those down to twelve dollars, the maximum square foot rate paid by the court to any other county. Previous communications from the Supreme Court Administrative Office to your office have attempted to clarify the issue. This letter serves as a reaffirmation of the court's intent to continue paying twelve dollars a square foot for the Montague County Family Court space.
Commissioner Bloom, please remain calm. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I think we should respond in that by code, it states what we are allowed to receive. And this was calculated by their appraisal and their appraiser and came to this amount that we have been charging them. And I think there should be a proper response, not acknowledging that we accept this fee as being a legitimate fee, but that the fee should be as stated, the twenty-four and forty cents.
I agree.
So, I'm continuing to bill them at twenty-four?
Yes.
Fifty?
And I think we should respond.
Yes.
I mean, with a letter.
All right.
And I will abide by Commissioner Garrison's comments. I will not say anything.
Thank you. We're gonna keep her around.
Do we need a motion for two?
Yeah, let's see.
So moved.
Second. Since it has been properly moved and second, is there any discussion? We will now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes.
Good.
Notice from WV Department of Transportation, Division of Highways, District Four of Traffic Delays beginning on Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, and to continue until June fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, for road repairs, work on shoulder and ditches.
Just if I might ask clarification, there seems to be some confusion. People saw that and think the entire road is being paved. And that is not what I believe is gonna happen. I believe they're gonna work on the roads, but only the last four miles, I believe, is.
Yeah, and to clarify, it's West Virginia Route Seven, Mason Dixon Highway, from the Wetzel County line to the junction of US nineteen.
Yeah. Okay, just want to clarify. Thank you.
Hmm.
Okay.
Third quarter levy spending report for Bo Park, January first, two thousand nineteen through March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
It's their financial report that was due, so anytime anybody wants to inspect that, it's available. And then we also have, we got one more yesterday. And the yesterday was the Mon River Trails Conservancy. And this is for the same time period, March through, sorry, January through March.
Are there any more correspondence?
No.
I did get a letter from the clerk with the unaudit it financial statement. Carrie, are we to ignore, do we do anything with this?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Sent to you for your, just your review to let you know that the financial statement had been completed and sent to us and it has been made part of the audit that is ongoing.
Okay, and I have reviewed it and I haven't found any issues with it.
Is there any unfinished business?
No, ma'am.
Move on to new business. Presentation of two thousand nineteen land books and request for commissioners' signatures on oath and certificates.
I was hoping somebody from the assessor's office would be here. But Mr. Tenney from the assessor's office brought down the signature pages from the real estate textbooks for two thousand nineteen for your signature. And then we'll deliver those back to the assessor's office. Move for approval.
Second. Since it has been properly moved and second, is there any discussion? We will now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. To consider requests from Amy Loomis and Julie Bryan to use the courthouse square on June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen for Pop-Up Plaza Arts and Community Event from ten AM to four PM.
Oh, is she here?
Oh, wait, wait, she's here.
Oh, hi.
Oh, fantastic.
Hi there.
Hi there, good morning. My name is Amy Loomis. I'm a community development professional and an artist. I'm collaborating with Julie Bryan, who's a community development person, as well as the director of Spark Imagination and Science Center. We received the Arts Mon Impact Grant to fund the Pop-Up Plaza event at courthouse square. And so, we're applying for the use of the square on June eighteenth. The use of the square, the community event is a public event that brings arts and creativity into the square. We're going to add seating for one day, a coffee cart, an opportunity for the public to meet their county commissioners or their public safety officials. So, it's got a civic component as well. And we're coordinating with Main Street Morgantown to do brown bag lunch specials to encourage people to use the square.
Move for approval?
Second.
Second.
Since it has been properly moved and second, is there any discussion?
This is just another example for the public that's out there and for you students. Our courthouse is the people's courthouse. There's no charge to use it. We just have an application process to make sure it's not used for, you know, that we don't double book it. So, this is what the courthouse is there for and I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
We will now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners and commissioners-to-be.
Consideration of requisition number two for the Mon General TIF Series, two thousand sixteen C, Maple Drive Improvements Project Fund.
The requisition is, total is for one hundred thirty-one thousand five hundred and five dollars and twenty-five cents. And the cost will be paid to Mount Air Contracting for paving and CTO Engineering for engineering services. Move for approval.
Second. Okay, since it has been properly moved and second, is there any discussion? We will now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. Consideration of requisition number twenty-nine for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
The requisition is for five hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. This is for the month of April. Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Since it has been properly moved and second, is there any discussion? We will now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. To consider requests received by Bradley Stevens Attorney at Law for a partial release of judgment lien against Doris L. Allen and Ladonna Altman, but only as to their held interest in two tracts of real estate described as Clay District, map fifteen, parcels eight and twenty-two.
Okay. Short version of why we received this. Once upon a time, those particular pieces of property, or I'm sorry, not those particular pieces of property, two individuals, Doris Allen and Ladonna Altman, they had interest in a larger parcel. And there was some dilapidated house, a dilapidated structure on it. Our Dilapidated Housing Authority went through the process and with the fines, because they hadn't cleaned up the trash and the dilapidated structure. So, the county came in at some point about ten years ago, went through and demolished the structure. And at that point, then a lien is placed on the two individuals. They are, they own partial interest in another piece of property. And in order for that to be sold, we have to release the lien partially on those, for those two individuals, so that their interest can be sold to someone else. So, that was the purpose of this letter. Any questions?
And this is at the recommendation of our council.
Yes, Phil has reviewed. He was working with their council and this is the paperwork that's resulted.
I move for approval?
Second.
Since it has been properly moved and second, is there any discussion? We will now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. Are there any more new business?
No, ma'am.
Reports from elected officials.
Good morning.
Good morning. Kelly Palmer, Chief Tax Deputy. And on behalf of Sheriff Perry Palmer, I'd like to request time on the June twelfth agenda to present the delinquent list of taxes for two thousand eighteen. And also, congratulations to everyone on their achievement.
Thanks.
It's exciting to see young people interested in government.
Thank you.
Not elected official, but I'm coming back up. I would just like to take a minute to publicly thank Paul Brake, the city manager of City Morgantown, Kenny Holloway, who is the director of public works for the city and their employees. The slide that we have going up to our building, state was gonna clean up, but there was a couple of big trees there that they were afraid about the power lines. Needless to say, our bucket trucks not coming till the first of the month and they're gonna move out next week. So, I got ahold of Kenny and sent an email and they brought a crew over and removed the trees. So, they're gonna clean up a lot of the slides so we can build a wall and get our road open back up over there. So, I just wanted to let you all know that the city did that, maybe sent him a letter to thank him for helping us out.
Could I have a motion to write a letter to thank them?
So moved.
Since it has been properly moved and second, is there any discussion? We will now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. Reports from county commission.
That's why you got the report. What's going on in your week?
In my week?
Yes. You're just happy to be out of school today.
Yes.
I won't put you on the spot. Since last meeting, yes, last Wednesday evening, I had the Mon County Development Authority Executive Committee meeting. On Thursday, I had the Red Team meeting and Mon County Development Authority. On Friday, we had a site visit at the Extension Building. This past weekend, of course, is Mother's Day. Happy Mother's, belated Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. I hope you girls all treat your moms as they deserve during their special day. Yesterday, I had the Montague County 4H and Extension Building Project Status Meeting. Today, we have a fairly light day, but I have a Morgantown Area Partnership meeting tonight. Tomorrow morning, we have the Mile and Park Executive Committee meeting with, and then in the evening, we have the MMPO meeting. This weekend, all the high schools graduate Friday. Congratulations to all the UHS graduates. On Saturday, all the MHS graduates, which includes my daughter. And on Sunday, I believe the Clay Patel graduation. So, congratulations to all the kids that will be graduating this weekend. Next week, on Monday, I have a meeting with the city manager regarding the Red Team project. And on Tuesday, we have Mile and Park Aquatic Center tour. So, wanna congratulate you girls again on a job well done.
Thank you.
Very well-run meeting. It's very hard to keep him that quiet at meetings. So, well, thank you Gabby, I appreciate it. So, that's all I have.
Can I keep her?
Do you have any comments?
No.
Are you certain?
Yes.
Okay. Don't be shy. It's your time to speak. Okay? All right. Well, again, congratulations to you all. The disadvantage of being the second commissioner is that the first commissioner generally can swoop the board on all the events that both of us attend. But last week, I did do something unique. I actually removed a swarm of bees that had decided to nest itself on one of our gas panes, right beside the old county jail. So, and then I gifted those to a local beekeeper. So, they are safely in a hive and well taken care of. I did attend the Extension Services Commission meeting. That was last Wednesday. And yesterday, as Sean mentioned, we were at Mile and Park at our 4H and Extension Center. All we need now are sunny days. Finally, we see one today. The MMPO does meet tomorrow. I hope that we can address some planning issues of DOH. Friday is the Historical Society meeting. I will be in attendance. With, relative to that, as I stated, I will be next Tuesday. I believe that is the date. I will be at South for the History Bowl Trophy presentation. I am, first of all, I was an English and history minor in undergraduate. So, history has still played a great part in, and I congratulate you on your second consecutive, I believe, award. Is that correct? So, that's a good, that's really good. Lastly, a tribute of remembrance to Guy Stewart. He was a gentleman. He represented 4H well. He represented our community well. He passed away this week, but he will be missed. Thank you.
You wanna share this with outline? That's a picture of the bees.
Oh, yeah. This is pretty cool. Gabby, would you like to say something? But I do wanna ask you the one question, which is, what's it like to run a meeting in front of everybody and they're all staring at you?
It's kinda scary, but it's pretty fun, I think.
Good, I'm really glad. I think that's the first thing I want people to understand. As a teacher, it's one thing you learn about it. It's another when you actually get up here and people are staring at you. Also, if you notice why we're up higher, is 'cause that was done specifically back two hundred years ago, talking about history, because they wanted you to be the peasants and the people making the decision were above you looking down at you. So, that is why in a court or so on, that is why that is set up. I do wanna say that I did attend the pedestrian safety meeting. Very excited that WVU, City Morgantown and Mon County is working on three different areas of pedestrian safety. And we're about to put some up to fifty-five thousand dollars in to make it safe. But I do wanna show people, since the students are here, something that no one knows about yet that we're gonna be promoting, which is called Mount Air Safe. Now, it's a West Virginia emblem, but it glows in the dark. So, we're hoping that the students will put it on their bags or their books and so on. Bags, probably not books. And then basically, when they're walking at night, the cars will see it. And then we're hoping from there that, you know, the junior high, high school and elementary students will pick it up. So, at least it's one more thing. I really believe we're gonna really promote Mount Air Safe and pedestrian safety. So, we're very excited about that. I do wanna thank Jennifer Percy and the County Commission Association of West Virginia. We really couldn't do this without you. I think this is a wonderful idea. And as a former guidance council, but a student council advisor, I love it. This is probably my favorite day to see, I miss being with the students, but to come here and see what the future's gonna be like in West Virginia. We have these three amazing, four amazing individuals that come before us. And this makes us, the three of us commissioners, feel good of why we do what we do and the other elected officials here, because you are a future and we're thrilled that you're a part of something special. So, with that.
One other thing I'd like to mention to the teachers, which nobody ever takes us up on this. Well, I don't know how often it's offered, but as a county commission, we're always open to, we have what we call work sessions on Wednesday. So, we meet here. This is our regular meeting. And then we have a bunch of other meetings, because everything we decide, everything we decide in these meetings was probably broached in a work session meeting, but we still have to do that in a public setting. But we're always open to, if you want to bring in a class and ask, have a work session, where you just talk to us about county government, you know, we're certainly willing to do that. So, keep that in mind if you're ever interested in the future.
And that includes inviting us to speak as well. In other words, we're not, I'm never opposed to going somewhere to talk.
And I like to talk. So, with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.
All right, we're done, thank you. Great job.
Excellent, good job, Abby.